Just quickly ask fellow Board of Health members if there are any changes to the posted agenda. We have a report from, and I'll just, I'll just say this for other folks on the call, we have a report from Colleen Nelson, both on COVID-19 update and Board of Health's structure update, and then we will have the hearing for Richard and Denise Hagerdy. And then a report from Building and Land Use, and then just a discussion of the next agenda item, and I'm copying the agenda into the chat, give me a second here. Oh, and I'm sorry. Colleen, sorry, I'm just looking in the chat. I appreciate your point about respecting everyone's time here. I am personally fine with just moving right into the hearing first. Are there any board members with an alternate view? I think we could just by consensus agree to move up the hearing. And can I ask, sorry, apologies for me still getting up to speed on how we run these hearings, is Agenda Item 3, the presentation of the staff report, for the public hearing? Or is that a separate update informational item?
Sorry, no, that is the one and of the same, I didn't catch.
Okay, great, I was just looking at the chat, so we would move Agenda Item 3 and 4 up before the report from Colleen. Okay, great. Okay.
All right, so I guess like Jeff said, if there's no objective objections to us starting the presentation for the public hearings, then I can jump on into that.
Great, yeah. I am seeing and hearing no objections, so yeah, Jackie, if you wanted to go ahead. So, and again, sorry, should I open the public hearing and then have you present, or do you present first and then we open the public hearing? Again, apologies for being rusty on this.
Jeff, this is Kayla, if you would have Jackie present first and then the applicant present second, and then if we can open up the public hearing for public comment.
Joseph Fatter's here and objects to both meeting.
Sorry, Joe, you cut out for a second there, you objected to what?
Yes, my name is Joseph Fatter. I'm attorney for Catherine Olsen, who is a property owner, who did not receive proper notice of this meeting as required by your own rules. And so I'm going to, I am objecting to the meeting. The public hearing, it has to be conducted after proper notice is given to the property owner.
Okay.
We did mail out notices and and we sent the notices to the address listed in the assessor's address for the property owners. We sent those notices out to all adjacent property owners with the appropriate 20-day public comment period. I don't know why they weren't received. Never had that happen before. I also attempted to email the notices out to email addresses that I had for persons involved in.
Jackie, this is Kayla, do you have a list of the property owners that you sent those notices to, both via snail mail and electronic mail?
Yes, I do. I can try to bring that up here also.
Hey, so yeah, Mr. Fatter, hold on a second while we pull, pull up that and we can sort out.
Thank you.
And then, and maybe while that's getting pulled up, just to clarify, are you, are you saying that you didn't receive the notice, or the notice that you did receive wasn't adequate in some way?
The record should reflect the objections based upon the meeting not being properly called pursuant to your own rules.
And I was asking if, if you would, what, what rule or rules do you feel that weren't followed properly?
I don't believe that I have an obligation to tell you how to conduct your own meeting. It's a legal issue, I'll take up with the county attorney, but I'm not going to tell you how to schedule your own rules, your own motions, your own hearings.
This is Chris Floyd, the county attorney, and I, I agree that there has to be some basis supporting the allegation that notice wasn't properly provided, and so I think Commissioner Fiedler's questions, Mr. Fatter, about, you know, the, the scope of the ejection as to why this public hearing should not proceed, should be presented.
Well, Ms. Floyd, maybe you could tell me what you understand the rules require. What notice, is your understanding, what's required in the notice?
Mr. Fatter, I'll respectfully say, it's not for me to educate you, the objecting attorney, as to what the requirements are. You should have a good faith basis as to why you're objecting on behalf of your client, and so.
Just, I'm not, not suggesting you advise me, I'm suggesting you advise the board, your own client.
Well, at this point in time, I haven't heard anything that suggests they did not follow the proper procedure. Ms. Little Page's proffered that notices were sent to the adjacent property owners with the 20-day comment period, and so we have nothing in front of us at this point in time to suggest that wasn't done, or that, you know, for that matter, that your client didn't receive the notice within the, the required time period, and, and that's all I'm saying is I think that's.
I was, I was, I've stated for the record, the objection that the meeting has not been properly noticed, it's for you to, you know, to articulate your own rules, and that will save the matter for judicial review.
According to the Lake County Onsite Wastewater Treatment System Regulation variance procedure, it says variance request must be provided through Lake County Public Health Agency in writing, the Board of Health shall, shall hear the variance request at a public hearing as soon as possible. In addition to other requirements of hearing procedures, the Lake County Public Health Agency shall notify all adjacent property owners of the public hearing by sending notice via certified mail minimum 20 days prior to the hearing, which we did, and we posted it through courthouse office and via email notifications. Made every attempt possible. Again, I've never had this happen before.
And, and, and again, to clarify, Mr. Fatter, like, we're not, I mean, well, so you have the rules up ahead, it, it is hard for me to accept your objection without understanding, I mean, what, what provision here in B1 do you feel like wasn't followed? And that seems like a reasonable request to ask of you to entertain your objection.
Am I going to be communicating with your attorney, am I going to be communicating with you?
You're welcome to communicate with our attorney directly.
You're represented by counsel, I think the discussion should be with counsel.
This is, this is a publicly noticed meeting, I, I, I believe that you can respond directly to Fiedler's questions.
Well, to repeat again, it's not a properly called meeting, and my client does not have to participate.
And again, the, I believe you need to proffer some proof that it wasn't properly noticed.
For your obligation to show that it's properly called, not mine.
Okay, and so Ms. Little Page, I think, was in the process of, of providing that information. She advised the, the board that the letters were sent out, and I, I don't know, what else do you want her to provide in terms of, of proof that it was properly noticed? Is your, and, and go back to Commissioner Fiedler's question, did, are you saying that your client didn't receive the notice?
My client did not receive proper notice. Notice required on the rules and statute.
Okay, and, and did your client receive the note, a notice from the, the county, though, in regards to, or from the Board of Health in regards to this matter?
My client did not receive the proper notice required by the rule and by their own regulations.
Okay, so, and the reason I, I keep asking, did, was the notice received, is that if your, if your client received notice, if you're saying it wasn't a proper notice, it's for you to show why the notice wasn't proper.
Well, I think the burden's on your part, not mine.
I'm sorry, it's not.
On appeal, it's going to be, on judicial review, it's going to be your burden, not mine.
And, and so the, I, I guess the question is, we can't respond to an allegation that the notice was, was not proper without knowing why you say it was not proper.
Not for me to educate the board, it's your obligation.
No, sir, I respectfully disagree.
I guess I'm.
And so at this, at this point in time, I can advise Commissioner Fiedler, you know, the objection's been noted, and so, for the record, and so it's up to the board to determine whether they want to proceed in light of the objection. I believe that Ms. Little Page was in the process of advising the board as to the steps that were taken to provide the notice as understood under the, the regulations and statute and so forth. And so it'll be up to the board to decide whether they wish to honor the objection and carry this over to the next meeting, or to proceed while acknowledging the objection.
I thank you to the county attorney, I think at this point, I might ask any fellow board members if they have questions. I think at this point, it's a, it'll be questions to Jackie Little Page, you know, sort of further clarifying whether our procedures have been followed. And then, again, please, any fellow board members or county attorney step in. Perhaps we could entertain a vote among the board members about whether we want to, or entertain a motion to proceed, given the information we have from staff and from the public at this point.
This is Kim Jackson, I can confirm that those letters were sent out to Catherine Olsen, to the list, to the address, the mailing address that was listed in the assessor's website. That's, that's all I have.
Kim and Jackie, this is Kayla, can you, I think, Jackie, you had a spreadsheet listed up there with all of the property owners that were notified. Do you have the date that the letters went out with, with the notification and a copy of the notification for us to see that was sent to property owners?
I can look up the date that we mailed them.
And Jackie, in that same file is the drafted letters that were printed and mailed out.
Can you see this letter?
No, you might have to stop sharing and then reshare.
About now.
Yes.
Okay, this was the letter that was typed up and mailed out on the 21st. And then I had also attempted to do an email copy of what was mailed out.
And this letter does reference both properties for Catherine Olsen.
Okay. Jackie, a question of clarification, when you say you attempted to email, you use the emails that you have on file, if available.
Well, so I don't know if this is the problem, but in the assessor's website, the property for Catherine Olsen is in care of Kirsten Ayers.
And so anytime we are looking up neighboring property addresses, we always go to the county assessor's website to pull that information.
Okay. Steve Cornelio, Kayla, do you have any further questions about the content of the notice, or how staff posted the notice?
No, I don't have any further questions or comments regarding the notice or the posting or the mailing.
Steve Boyle here, I have no questions, comments, or concerns.
This is Cornelio, and I don't either.
I had one, one procedural question, I think, for the county attorney, perhaps, if we proceed, you know, if, if we entertain a motion to proceed and do proceed, is the risk or downside that there's an appeal based on that, I'm just, I'm just sort of trying to gauge or understand the pros and cons of either proceeding today or tabling or delaying hearing.
For Commissioner Fiedler and others, as Mr. Fatter alluded to, if the, the board proceeds in hearing this, there is the opportunity for it to be challenged based on Mr. Fatter's allegation that proper notice wasn't, wasn't complied with, in which case he, he would be able to have judicial review of the matter. Or seek judicial review of the matter. So it's a decision as to whether the board feels that sufficient evidence has been presented by the Environmental Health Department to establish a proper notice was given, and if you have any concerns about that, then perhaps the appropriate approach would be to carry this over, to be able to research and confirm that proper notice was given.
And again, the, the downside for all of us in the county is that if there is a request for judicial review that incurs, would that hold, would that then stay, or, or, you know, I'm raising the wrong words, like, does that interfere with the permit, or, or the variance request?
I don't want to tell Mr. Fatter how to
Yeah, sure.
to proceed with this matter, but it potentially could, depending on what actions, actions are taken.
All right.
Yes. Yes, I'm on, I'm on the call.
Mr. Olsen, you need to meet yourself. Sorry. Yeah. Well, is any further discussion or questions from, from the board?
So if we were to table this, it was to send out another notice confirming that the party received proper notice of this variance meeting?
Not, I have to say, my concern, Mr. Fatter's refusal to provide the basis for why he thinks the notice wasn't proper. If, if the proper approach was taken, as you know, environmental health folks mentioned, that they used the assessor's information for the property owner, and that included sending the the notice to care of someone besides the actual property owner. If that's the basis for his complaint, then we would need to find some other way to make sure that Ms. Catherine Olsen receives notice directly.
Yeah, and, and, and I'll just say, I mean, you know, in, in trying to figure this out in a pragmatic way, you know, I, my only concern with proceeding is that we sort of snarl the applicant up in some unnecessary and potentially costly legalities. So I'll just say, you know, for discussion purposes, for the board, fellow board members, I'm trying to weigh moving ahead with what seems at this point to have been properly noticed versus the risk to us and the applicant of getting snarled.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with that, I, I hate the notion of the board being essentially held hostage by unsupported allegations of, of improper notice, but at the end of the day, I agree with you that the applicants may be negatively impacted if you proceed, and Mr. Fatter carries through with his threat, if you will, to take judicial action to have the, the proceeding reviewed.
This is Kayla, and I, I agree with that as well. I think the, the calculation of risk to the county and the applicant, and the undue harm to both the county and the applicant with the unknowns right now, for me, are a little too much to proceed with a public hearing at this point. And I would feel more comfortable if we tabled this meeting to a date certain, to ensure that proper notice is attempted.
I would just like to ask if that might be the best way to proceed, but my only concern is that we still only have the mailing address that's listed on the assessor's website, so I don't know how we would proceed on trying to contact Catherine without better contact information.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Fatter, if in fact the board agrees to carry this over to the next meeting, would you be so gracious as to provide the correct contact information for your client?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Would you be able to provide that to us in chat or by email right now?
I need, I would need to confer with her first. That is a professional courtesy. Confering with Ms. Floyd, I certainly would accommodate that.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I've not discussed that, and I have no authority to act without her consent, however, having said that, I think you're entitled to that professional courtesy.
Yeah.
I would just like to point out that I feel like we did do the proper procedure, and we did contact, we did send the information to the owner's mailing address listed on the assessor's website.
Ms. Jackson, was that letter in fact sent, were they sent via regular first-class mail or certified, or how, how was that postage done?
That's a question for Jackie, I just drafted the documents.
Jackie, recall?
That might be an issue, it might have not gone certified mail, I'm trying to look for receipts for this public hearing, and I'm not seeing a receipt for the certified mail cards that, you know, normally I fill out at the post office. Yeah, that's when I might have dropped in the outgoing mail for normal mail.
Okay, that was my purpose for asking, just to see if you had a receipt showing that it was received.
I'm looking. That is normal procedure.
Just while, while addressing that question, I see a hand up from Robert Kribble, we, we haven't opened a public hearing. So Chris Floyd, I'm just wondering if it's appropriate to take additional comment or see what that hand up is about?
Probably not, I would suggest that perhaps Mr. Kribble can put his comment in the chat, and the board can decide whether it wants to respond to it.
Thank you. Sorry, bouncing between participant lists and chat, not seeing a question there, so I'm going to assume that hand was just withdrawn.
He could still be typing.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. I won't rush things. Yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, that, that chat was to everyone, so I think that's understood up here in our climate that that was the pros and cons I was referring to about moving ahead versus the risk of getting held up anyway.
This is Jackie, I am not finding any receipts for certified mail.
Okay, thanks for that additional.
I dropped the ball and dropped these into the outgoing mail.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, I was just on that Commissioner Fiedler. If in fact that they should have gone certified mail, then I, I would recommend that it be carried over.
Yeah, and if I recall from when we had the screen share up of the rules, it does specifically say certified mail.
Yes, it does, and that's proper protocol.
Yep. So, in that case, I think we're at the point, I, and fellow board members, of course, welcome to ask further questions, but I think I would entertain a motion to I guess, uh, sorry, Chris Floyd or Jackie, um, make sure I say this right, but I think at this point, we would be, um, I don't think we're tabling because it needs to be reposted entirely, right?
Uh, yeah, it would need to be, it, it pretty much a do ever, so my, my suggestion would be to perhaps call for a motion to table this to the next Board of Health, meaning in order to provide the required notice.
Okay.
Oh, I apologize greatly for this mistake.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, so at this point, looking for a motion from a board member.
So I will make a motion that we repost this request for a variance application so that proper notice can be mailed certified to each neighboring property, property owner.
Can we request that Mr. Fatter send the proper mailing address to Ms. Floyd, or to myself, I mean, whoever legally it needs to go through?
I, I believe he indicated that he, he would provide that to me, and I'll send that on soon.
Okay, can I get a second for that motion so we can proceed, please?
Jeff, I would second the motion, but I would also like to ask if we're able to do a meeting in November after the time period that's required for notification, if that is a possibility, especially if we were to get a, um, like we normally do with weather patterns, that we forget a warm end of fall before the temperatures drop, if that was able to help out the client?
Yeah, that seems, uh, very, um, yeah, that, uh, that seems appropriate, given the circumstances. Uh, we could do everything in our power to, to, to schedule that, you know, as soon as we can with the proper notice given.
Yeah, that's gonna be difficult, just because the proper notice is 20 days in advance of the hearing.
What would be the next scheduled date?
Just doing the math, if we were able to do that tomorrow, obviously, we don't have the ability to do that tonight, to do certified mail, but we can do that first thing in the morning, and 20 days from tomorrow would be it. So we're looking at the first week in November for that, so later in that week, the fourth would be a Thursday.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. My question was, when is the next scheduled Board of Health meeting that you would take this up normally?
Um, we do not, so our Board of Health meetings are held quarterly, but because of the increase in variances, we have been making them as they come in, so we would have to set that meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, well, I think we, um, Steve, Steve, that's a good thing this noted, I think, once we are sure that the certified mail has gone out, we can, you know, just do the math on the calendar, make sure it's not a public holiday, or, you know, the, you know, we have, make, make sure that we are confident of having quorum, and we'll proceed as soon as we can.
Looks like, uh, Thursday, November 4th would be the most immediate time that we could schedule for.
Okay, uh, thanks for doing that math, Jackie. Uh, Steve, is that, um, does that answer your question, and then do we have a second on the table?
It does. Thank you for entertaining that. Uh, this is technically my last meeting if county commissioners were to take over Board of Health. I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, yeah, thanks for noting that. Okay, um, so we have a motion on the table. Any further questions or discussion from board members? Hearing none. I will do a vote, roll call, uh, Steve Boyle?
Aye.
Uh, Cornelia? Cornelia, Cornelia, are you still on? Oh, great, thank you. Uh, great, thank you. Thank you for hanging in there. Um, Kayla?
Aye.
Great, Kim?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Okay. So we will uh, take this up once we're certain that we have certified mail out. We will, you know, tentatively scheduling for Thursday, November 4th, but we will confirm that uh, once we are doubly sure, uh, we have everything button down here. Thank you, everyone, for, um, yeah, answering questions and sorting this out.
Thank you for getting, thank you for getting my request.
Thank you. We will be in touch. Um, so I think with that, uh, we can move on from those agenda items. And I am scrolling around. Uh, so I think we can jump back to the public health update from Colleen Nielsen. Great, thank you.
Hey, guys, it's Colleen. Thank you so much. And, um, you know, as far as COVID-19 goes, most of you guys, um, we have a call every week that we kind of update, but at this point in time, our cases are stable. We are seeing cases in families that then are impacting students. So we do know that there's, you know, cases happening at the school. We also know that there were, um, some cases at the Lake County Courthouse that we have sent out information um, to the general public, just to be aware if they were in the courthouse on either Friday, the 8th, or Monday, the 11th, that there's a possible exposure. As we know, we can't always determine the patterns of people moving through the courthouse. So we just alerted folks to the fact that if they're not feeling well, to please stay home, get tested if you're sick, as well as if you don't have symptoms, so please get tested in three to five days post whatever date you might have been in the courthouse. So that is my COVID update. Does anyone have any questions about that? I will take that as a no. And then the next piece that we had talked about last time, and hopefully folks have had time to think about it, is the opportunity to bring the board back to a three-member board, which would have the Board of County Commissioners representing as the Board of Health per the statute. Because of our population size, we are able to have our Board of County Commissioners serve in that role. The reason I had posed this is because, as we're here today, we continue to have more needs to meet. We saw that through COVID. Now we're seeing this through our variance process, and then I can only imagine what things might look like come fall. So the access piece, um, has been a struggle. I so appreciate everyone who has been stepping up and getting, you know, here to the meetings. But I think at the same time, for that continuity, the decision-making and the flexibility, it would, I would recommend going to a three-member board with the Board of Health, or excuse me, with the Board of County Commissioners serving in that role. As Steve mentioned, he is time on the board. He has served five years on the Board of Health. Um, and I believe it was October 16th when he got in the board five years ago, and so he would already be stepping out. We recognize too that Kim Jackson, when she was, um, when she came onto the Board of Health, was not an employee of Lake County Public Health. And we find that currently, especially as we look at more variances with environmental health, which is where she specifically works in public health, that we would ask her to step down, and so, um, that would leave Cornelia at this point in time, so we'd have to fill, you know, multiple spots. And, um, I haven't heard currently whether or not that would be a make or break for you to, um, not be part of the board. Obviously, we would welcome comment and opportunity to continue to receive information from folks and, uh, and to weigh in on things. So that is where we're at. So I would like the board to, um, consider a motion to come down to, like, I'm saying it wrong, but I would like the board to make a motion to become a three-member board with the Board of County Commissioners serving as the Board of Health.
Colleen, this is Kayla. I think we have, um, a few more, um, steps with legal to go through to determine if that's how we do that appropriately. So I would, I would prefer if we could wait until our next meeting to, um, determine if that's something we can do so that legal can fully vet how we, um, appropriately take that action, if that's how we want to move forward.
Yes, obviously, I'm not opposed. I haven't heard, um, anything in the past month of any information needed on my end. So if that's something that needs to be shared, um, I did reach out to the state and they did not have anything because of, um, the unusualness of it, so to speak. And so, um, if Chris, if there's anything that I can provide on my end, um, I am more than happy to do so.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, just to say, I, I will probably follow up with you in terms of documentation. We're trying to clarify, um, historical, uh, historical aspects of the Board of Health in order to figure out what part of the statute applies.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, having done that and having access to, you know, the minutes, um, you know, the, the meeting prior to bringing Steve on was, Colleen proposed that we have a five-member board. The next meeting, we brought Steve on. So the notes, I don't know, are very helpful, and I tried to, like, pick my brain and go back to what I had on my computer, but I will, uh, I will sit down and provide anything that I do have, and we can figure that out. So thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, great. Thanks, everyone, for that discussion. So any other questions from the board on that agenda item? On the restructure?
Just to clarify, if, so we don't take a vote, all of us will still be seated at the next meeting? Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I think that's the, that's the correct and most appropriate road for us to take right now, and then take action um, as directed by legal at our next meeting to make that change, um, if that's what we determine as a board that we want to do. But I think if we, we want to make sure that we don't, you know, inappropriately disband this five-member board, um, without properly, uh, recording, you know, the, the change, I guess.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm assuming procedurally, it would be helpful if current, if we could retain enough current board members to have quorum so that we can take that final vote.
So that would be up to Steve to make the decision if he's available for the November meeting, and depending on the outcome that um, he would either be relieved and/or we'd be trying to replace that position.
Yeah.
I could stick on for one more meeting.
Thank you, Steve.
No problem.
Thank you, Steve.
I, I would also suggest that probably applies with Ms. Jackson as well, given her new, um, as an employee of the Environmental Health Department.
Are you asking if I feel comfortable staying on for one more meeting, Chris?
I, I, I think my concern is the, the potential for there to be a conflict, as, uh, Colleen had alluded to in her comments about it. So I, I think that's something that we need to be cautious about, uh, going forward. Obviously, anything that, that would come before the board that you had worked on, I think, would require you to recuse yourself from participating in any discussion about it.
Okay, even though I don't have any, and even though I'm not in any way, um, you mentioned conflict of interest, even though I don't have any, um, gains from the work, is that right?
It's more, more of the appearance of potential impropriety than it is the actual. I'm not suggesting that you would engage in, in anything inappropriate. It's just the appearance of it that creates a conflict in this sentence, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, so if I'm hearing that right, the, I think the safest course is, is, Kim, for you to stay on, just to sort of help ensure quorum for our final vote on the restructuring, but recuse from any hearing or variance request or, or matter that sort of overlaps with your current uh, current role.
Okay, I got it. That makes sense. Yes, I'm happy to stay on, um, and, and refuse myself.
All right. Great, uh, Colleen, anything else from your updates for us, or we can move on? To the next agenda item?
I do not, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, just pulling up participants. All are you, do we still have? Do we have?
I don't see, I don't see anybody from Building and Land Use on.
Yeah. Okay. That's okay. Um. Let me just quickly add, uh, Colleen or Jackie, is there anything related to that agenda item that is on your minds that we need to think about?
No, it's just a standing agenda item.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, then we can move on to the next Board of Health meeting, and I feel like we kind of covered that, um, with, as I have in my notes, the understanding that we were shooting for Thursday, November 4th, but would send out a full notice of that, uh, as soon as we're sure that we have the certified mail sent out, and I's dotted and T's crossed on that. Does that sound right to everyone? Someone say yes.
I'm good, yes.
Um, uh, okay, then I think we are ready to adjourn. And again, as I apologize. Do, do we need, uh, do, I forget with this, do we need to vote to adjourn, or can we just call it?
Jeff, we usually take a, a vote to adjourn.
Excellent, thank you, Kayla. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a first and a second. Uh, do roll call to adjourn, Steve?
Aye.
Cornelia?
Don't see her on anymore.
Oh, did she drop? Okay. Sorry, I'm just scrolling up my participant list to double check. Okay, um, Kayla?
Aye.
Uh, Kim?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So at, uh, 4:52 on my clock, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.